Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Common Council of the City of Huntington. Prior to calling the meeting to order for the conducting of city business, we have an invocation led by Dr. Scott Rainey from Huntington First Church of the Nazarene, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Kristi McAlney. All those who wish to participate this time may rise.
Father in heaven, we're thankful today to gather together to conduct the business and the work of the city. And today, as we're now just a few days away from Father's Day, we want to begin by recognizing you as the good, good father to us. Thank you for the power that you've shown in creation, the power that you've shown in salvation by the sending of your son Jesus, to overcome the bondage that we have in sin through him. And Lord, today I pray that you would bless this meeting, that you would guide these leaders, that you would bless each one of them and their families. I pray for your special touch upon Mayor Strick as he leads this meeting and give him wisdom and give unity to our council and to our city. And Lord, may we act in a way tonight that you would be pleased with, that you would be honored by our words. And even when we disagree, Lord, would you help us to honor one another in the name of Jesus? We trust you today, Lord God, in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And one reminder as well, I do recognize we do have some members of the public in the room and we have a matter that members of the public may want to address. If you are interested in addressing council tonight for anything on the agenda, we do have a worksheet up here if you could fill that out and submit it. We still have time available for that. We've received one. Just want to make sure folks are aware of our process here. So with that then, we will call the business meeting to order, beginning with a roll call. Kristi?
Brodickam.
Present.
Chapman.
Present.
Felton.
Present.
Funk.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Pike.
Present.
Renssberger.
Present.
Thank you. And first item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 28th. Is there a motion to bring the minutes to the floor for consideration and adoption?
It's all move.
Second.
Motion and second regarding the minutes of the previous meeting, further discussion and consideration by council members. Not hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Kristi?
Chapman.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodickam.
Yes.
Thank you. And council members, just a reminder that for those tuning in online, they can only hear through the microphone system. So if you don't have the green light on in front of you when you're speaking, please utilize that and turn it on. Thank you. Moving along to consideration of reports from committees, boards, or commissions. This would include the subcommittees of DORA and Riverfront. The golf cart subcommittee has obviously already brought ordinance before council. But as we go along, Charlie, anything to update for the go to the order?
The DORA committee has submitted a draft to the Excise Department of Indianapolis and they're doing a review. But we hear back from them that's on hold.
Thank you, Charlie. Paul?
Nothing here. No updates.
Dwight?
Yes, Lime City Economic Development met on May 31st. And we met at the Huntington County Jail. And after lunch and business, we actually had a tour. Fascinating facility. Lots of interesting things to learn there. Lot of, lot of good things happening in terms of how things are being handled.
Thank you. PJ?
Nothing to report.
Todd?
Nothing here.
Andrew?
Yes, RDC, we met on Friday. Pretty much did an overview from our January meeting just to look over things. Budget looked pretty healthy moving forward. We are doing everything we can to make sure that we're abiding by state regulations and laws. And then we are still working to take care of HK Porter. So that's still top priority on our, on our list. So other than that, all good.
Thank you. Dave?
Hello?
Okay. Moving along, next item, petitions or comments from citizens. As I noted, we received one from Dave Schrader. And so I want to invite him to come forward and address council this time. Dave, if you could state your full name and your resident, your address of your residency into the record, and you'll have three minutes to address council.
Okay, David Schrader. Address is 1571 North Kramer Road, Andrews, Indiana. So just west of here. And I come this morning, I've talked with Mr. Funk, Mr. Felton, this on the golf cart ordinance. And I'll pre-address all of this. Is yes, we by chance have gotten into golf cart sales and service, but we, when we did that, we had no clue that there was even an ordinance being talked about. So my motivation isn't here to get sales, okay? So, you know, whether the city passes the ordinance or whether it doesn't, you know, it's not going to make or break us. We're going to do what we set out to do as far as serving the community with another offering of product and service. We've, I've been honestly, as we got into it, kind of surprised at how many people are interested in the golf carts and, you know, from around the community, outside the community. So I guess, you know, my thing is I've learned a lot with what, you know, you two have put together with your subcommittee. I did sit in on some of their organizing meetings and that with Mayor Strick and Steve, I don't remember his last name. And I know the last council meeting, Todd, you had a concern about the speed, not slowing traffic down. And I think the other gentleman that had spoke, you know, his goes like 20. But most of the newer ones, they'll easily do 25 to 30 mile an hour and, you know, some of more, you know, especially the side by sides, you know, they'll, they'll do well over that. So, but I guess my, my take on the whole thing is more from the community side and talking to a lot of people around the community, you know, that we've been involved with, you know, through, through the shop on Park Drive or through the golf shop on, on East Park. It's just something that, just another piece of recreation that we can offer to our community, you know, is it going to keep somebody that's looking to move to Huntington? Well, they don't sell or don't have golf court, you know, it's not going to keep people from moving here or anything. But I think it's just another opportunity of something that we can offer. If you look, and I was not aware of this until sitting in with you gentlemen, that every community around us, you know, Roanoke and Columbia City and Andrews and Marco and Bluffton, everybody has a golf court ordinance. So, and I've heard some of the concerns, you know, it's going to overtax the policemen, are going to have to, you know, have others overwhelmed with it. I wholeheartedly don't believe, you know, you pass an ordinance, they're going to have 6,000 golf carts out there, you know, that's just, it's not going to be the case. And, and talking with Officer Ellett, police chief, during some of these meetings and that, if you, you know, I'm 100% confident, you know, like Columbia City and, you know, I know for sure Andrews because I know them, that's where I live, you know, they haven't been overwhelmed with, you know, issues going on. You know, I've heard everything from narrow streets and we're not laid out right and all that kind of thing and that. But I just really have a hard time thinking that our citizens of Huntington are more inept than anybody else in the other communities of being able to, you know, responsibly handle
30 seconds.
the golf carts, you know, driving and that. So, so, you know, just, you know, something to think about. It's not a, you know, a major thing, you know, but it's just, I think something that we can offer, you know, our, our community and, you know, just kind of another recreation piece that we, we haven't had. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you for your comment today. Council members, any questions for Mr. Schrader? Okay. Thank you.
I have, I have one. I have one question.
Wait.
One council, one council member's questions.
If you had to guess how many people within the city limits would buy golf carts, assuming the ordinance passed, what would that number be?
Okay, thank you. So for, for those who may not have been able to hear, it was potentially 50 to 100 to begin with. Okay. Keeping in theme with the public comment then, we have a first item under old business is first reading of ordinance 6C24. Kristi?
Ordinance 6C24, this ordinance if adopted would authorize the use of golf carts and UTVs on city streets in accordance with a new chapter of the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 75.5, Golf Carts and Utility Task Vehicles.
Thank you, Kristi. Is there a motion to bring ordinance 6C24 to the floor for consideration?
It's all move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. So with that, I'm going to invite Chief Boxel to come and present from the perspective of HPD and the research they've done and talking with law enforcement and other communities as he's making his way forward. Just a reminder to council that even here with first reading, it is council's prerogative to, to table, to refer back to subcommittee, to amend or to adopt as presented. So you have tremendous flexibility as you discuss and debate where to go. So Chief?
Good evening. Thanks for having me. First and foremost, I would just like to say, I really appreciate the opportunity to serve on the subcommittee as just a voice of reason and I guess to be able to provide our input and answer any questions there. I think as a whole, I just, I go back to want to thank Mr. Funk and Mr. Felton and also Mr. Stetzer. I haven't seen him here yet tonight, but really appreciate that as a first for me, being able to serve on such a committee and very insightful. To speak specifically to the ordinance, I think that from a whole, I really appreciate the thought that we have put into it and the safety aspects that we've put into it. To answer Dwight's question, you know, in regards to how many do we think that we might see in the city of Huntington, you know, I can relate to that answer to the city of Bluffton, you know, I'm very close with those administrators over there. I've worked with them for many, many years. They've actually had a golf cart ordinance in the city of Bluffton for about seven, I think going on eight years now. And they average about 250 permits per year. So it's taken a little bit to get there, but I think in comparison, I think over time, we could easily see somewhere in that 300 plus range for the city of Huntington. Going back to that aspect of it, you know, I do have concerns. I'm not going to lie. I don't know how I can't from a, from a law enforcement perspective. I appreciate the ordinance, like I mentioned, I appreciate the safety aspect. I also appreciate the fact that, you know, as we discussed it, we took away the registration responsibilities from law enforcement. So many of these other cities, they do an annual registration day that they could see anywhere from 80 to 120 golf carts in a single day that they have to inspect and go over. You know, in our discussion, this current ordinance as it's written, removes that responsibility from law enforcement and I appreciate that. We're not fabricators, we're not welders. And I know that the safety aspects that we put into the ordinance, requiring them to have seat belts and the lights and the turn signals and everything, you know, the lights and turn signals are easy. The seat belt side of it, you know, maybe not so much. So, but I do appreciate those sides of the, of the ordinance. You know, speaking specifically to Bluffton that I mentioned there to Mr. Brodickam, you know, they are in the process over there of establishing a trail system that runs the entire length of State Road 1, north and south in their city. And if you guys have been over there and witnessed any of that, that trail is significantly wider than our trails here in Huntington. And they've, they're doing that for the purpose of being able to satisfy that, that golf cart ordinance so that they can run those vehicles up and down the side of that highway because as we all know, state statute will not allow us to, to operate a golf cart on state highway. We can cross the state highway perpendicularly, we just can't operate on it. So, you know, I equate that back to our trail system. We know that, you know, the likelihood of, of residents operating their golf carts on our trails is probably going to happen until we educate them and, and we enforce that ordinance to some degree. But obviously in our ordinance currently as it's written, we don't allow that to happen because our trails just weren't built to accommodate that. So, you know, my concern there would be that if we move forward with this, and the question back to council is, you know, what are we going to do with those trails? Are we going to expand those? Are we going to widen those? Obviously, our goal eventually is to interconnect them. But, you know, that's, that's probably one of my main concerns. Secondly, I feel like the ordinance as a whole, we might be jumping into this just a little bit too much too fast. And I say that specifically thinking of, you know, obviously there's a lot of congestion in our city at the moment from a traffic perspective with all of the construction. And we know that that's a temporary thing, but also with the festival that's going on, again, a temporary thing. What's not a temporary thing is anybody that travels up to the north side of Huntington on any given evening, you know, it's very, very congested. And as we've talked about and discussed in our committee, you know, we've researched different studies that are out there of communities that have enacted a golf cart ordinance and the accidents that do come along with those, specifically on any golf cart, but, you know, golf carts that are operated on a hard surface such as concrete or asphalt, you know, the traumatic brain injury is the number one concern, right? Because the golf carts are relatively narrow wheelbase and a high center of gravity. They roll over, people hit their heads on hard surface and that's what the number one injury that transpires. Secondly is limbs, right? Because our natural reaction when that thing rolls over is to stick our limbs out to try to brace our fall. And then we end up with broken arms or broken hands or whatnot. So from a personal standpoint, as the chief of police, chief law enforcement officer here in the city of Huntington, you know, if, if we're going to enforce this ordinance or we're going to approve this ordinance, I would like to see it scaled back on a more trial basis. Maybe start with some of our smaller communities like Carlisle Crossing or Indian Ridge where Mr. Stetzer lives, maybe even Hidden Hamlet, some of those more reserved and off the beaten path communities that we can give it a run and see how that goes before we open it up to the entire city. I know that's a hard topic for you guys as councilmen because everybody pays taxes and what's fair in that aspect. I don't know, that's more for you guys to decide than me. But I'm just thinking more of the safety concern. You know, I've used this analogy a lot. And that is, if you don't think there's a traffic congestion problem in the city of Huntington, try to, try to go up to Frontage Road or Howlenstein at 5 o'clock on a Friday night and to think that people are going to come out of Carlisle and try to go to any of our restaurants up there on a golf cart is certainly concerning from a police perspective. So one other thing I wanted to mention to you guys, and please, if you have any questions for me, please throw them at me. I know I've spoken to some of you guys individually and if we cover something that I'm missing, please speak up. But the number one issue that I talk to chiefs of police that have a golf cart ordinance in their community, the number one issue that they have all shared with me is that, you know, people just don't follow the rules. And specifically what I mean by that is golf carts. I know it's our job as a community and our job as a police department to, to enforce the ordinance and we will do so. And I know it's our job to educate the public and we will absolutely try to do that to the best of our ability. But the number one concern that I hear so often is that people just, they don't read the ordinance. We have a nice ordinance, we drafted, I already mentioned that. It's almost five pages long. Trying to get the public to read that and understand it is certainly a concern, right? So, yeah. I think that, you know, speaking to these other neighborhood or neighboring communities, you know, that's the number one problem that they have is that people just don't follow the ordinance. And they just think that when they're operating the golf cart rules don't apply to them because they're out having a good time and not trying to get to work or trying to get to wherever they are typically going in their personal vehicle. So one last thing I want to share with you, and that is just to speak to what I just mentioned, and that's a personal experience that I had. I grew up in the town of Warren, many of you guys know that. Back here in early May, my own father calls up my two children. I have a 13-year-old girl and a 16-year-old son. And he calls them up and he says, hey kids, I want you to come down and visit. I've got a surprise for you in my garage. And my daughter first says, oh, you bought a Mustang because my dad's been wanting to buy a Mustang for a while. So I load him up on Mother's Day and we go to Warren and, and we walk into the garage and it's not a Mustang, it's a golf cart. And so Warren is obviously, like Mr. Schrader said, a lot of our neighboring communities have an ordinance like that. And he has a golf cart in his garage that he's acquired. It's a nice machine, a very nice machine. Has all of the safety equipment that we have in our ordinance, the headlights, turn signals, seat belts, you name it, it has it. Slow-moving vehicle sign. It's, it's a nice machine. It's placard on the, on the dash to go 19 miles an hour. And, and it'll do every bit of that. But the very first thing that happens is my stepmother says to my 13-year-old daughter, jump in, take it for a spin. Because that's what grandparents are supposed to do, right? They're supposed to spoil their grandkids. And I got to be the bad guy that says, no. You know, I'm pretty confident that Warren's ordinance speaks that they have to have a driver's license, right? So let's don't do that. But my son did drive the cart. We took it for a family drive around the city of Warren and, and we probably put a mile and a half on that golf cart. We never passed one vehicle. Granted, it was Sunday afternoon, it was Mother's Day weekend, but we never passed the first car. That's not going to be Huntington. That's my concern. So I will tell you that my daughter later got to drive it. We, we took it to a private property at a shooting event that my kids participate in. And, and I think it's worth noting that the very first time she drives it, she takes it out, comes back and she tells me, Dad, I got it to 22 miles an hour. And I'm like, of course you did, honey. So again, I know that these golf carts do go faster than 22 like Mr. Schrader said. And again, my concern is that's fast on a golf cart, right? When they're loaded, will they go that fast? I seriously doubt it. I'm not a golf cart expert, but I have my doubts. But again, if they're 15 or 20 miles an hour, that's significantly less than the vast majority of our traffic is traversing here in the city of Huntington. And I'm specifically thinking of like Etna Avenue, State Street, some of those wide open streets that where we're going a little, little faster than, you know, the posted speed limit as we all know that people do. So anyhow, those are my concerns. Again, I go back to and I'll say it one more time. I appreciate the ordinance that we've drafted because I do think it's thorough and I think that we've put some good safety precautions in there. My personal recommendation was, would be that we step back and, and maybe revisit, open it up to the entire city all at once. Any questions that I can answer for you guys?
Do you know what the average weight of a car is?
Average weight of a car? Oh, boy. I mean-
6,000 pounds?
Yeah, I would say a couple ton.
And, and a golf cart's probably, the ordinance says can't be more than 2,000, right?
Right, I think, I think it was correct.
That was one of my concerns because 6,000 versus 2,000, that's, that's a bad-
Yeah, I mean, you're right. Size matters whether you're driving a big truck or whether you're driving a, you know, a small compact car. Size, size matters.
Other questions for council members?
Oh, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
And, and you could answer this or somebody else could too. But what about school zones? Have we talked to the school corporation? I'm thinking specifically not just of the high school, but also Horace Mann in Riverview on a street that's already has no shoulders and isn't very wide.
Right. You know, and just speaking to members of the community, I can't say that I've spoken specifically to the school corporation and we can absolutely follow up on that. But I can tell you that in members of the public that, that I have spoken with, you know, one of the concerns that I've heard is, is where are you going to park? You know, where are we going to, are we going to make special parking places at all of the different stores and shops and, and whatnot in our community? Are people going to park their, their golf carts in fire lanes? And are you guys going to have to enforce that? You know, yes. The answer is, in my opinion, yes. They're probably going to do so and we're, we're going to enforce that. And, and I'm not going to lie to you, that, that concerns me because of the public image and aspect of it, you know. I mentioned this to the mayor and I'll just say it, you know, I, I think that when we have to enforce this ordinance, it's going to be looked at differently than any other traffic stop or citation that we would typically write. He asked me, well, why do you say that? And I, I say that because it's different, right? When people are out having a good time in a golf cart, they're supposed to be out having a good time. And we're going to be the spoiler of that as we try to educate them on the proper use of it per our ordinance, right? To where if I stop you on your way to work and you're running late to work and I tell you, hey, you're 10 miles an hour over the speed limit, is there a reason for that? And you tell me, well, I'm running late to work, I'm sorry, right? That's different. In my mind, that's different. Thank you.
Okay, Chief. So it's my understanding then that if we would pass this thing, you would rather keep it in housing additions and pry it out?
I would love to see that start there.
And see how-
See how that transpires. I think it would also allow our community to get a little bit acclimated to it and you would get the word out there better. You know, we, we talk and I hear you folks talk all the time about you wish more people would come to these meetings and give more input, right? But until it's actually in their face and it's, it's a way of life, then that's when people seem to matter most, right? So that would be my personal preference, Dave, is that if we pass this, I would prefer we start small and, and work up from there.
Chief, I know we've, well, you put this in your annual report. Also, I think you and I've had a discussion about this before, but could you please remind me approximately what the average call per officer is in your department?
Sure. So our, our calls for service are, it's eerie and ironic, but they're almost the same year after year. Last year, I think we averaged somewhere around 18,000 calls per service. As you know, you guys have heard me say this, we're working hard to get to full staff. We're so close and I'm excited about that. But, you know, we're supposed to be a 36 officer department. Right now, we're at 35. We haven't been full staffed in about 13 years. But even if you take that 36 number and you divide it in 18,000, we're looking at just shy of 500 calls per ser, for service per officer per year. You know, I, I equate that oftentimes to other departments and, you know, people ever, always think that, you know, Fort Wayne City is so big and so enormous. And, and I use this as I beat up on my friend, the mayor at times, but, you know, they average about 200 calls for service per officer, less than we do on an annual basis.
And just how the ordinance, the draft ordinance is currently presented, from sunup to sundown, I presume most of your calls will not, for golf carts will not be for like third shift, maybe not even first shift, but probably second shift, which is probably your heavily-
Yeah. Second shift is by far our busiest shift. And I've, the mayor and I have spoken about that. I do have concerns with that. And, and he's willing to work with me and I may be back in front of you guys to address that. But, you know, we'll, we'll take care of that if we need to. But, you know, we, we, we have a minimum of staffing of four officers on second shift at all times, seven days a week. Our schedule when we are at full staff, we, it's scheduled for six, five to six officers working at any given time. Obviously, if somebody takes the day off for their training, whatnot, our minimum is four, you know. A city our size, that's not a lot, especially on second shift. You can see in our annual report that you guys all have been given a copy of, our breakdown, the hot times, you know, 4:30 in the afternoon, about 7:30 at night. It's, it's when people get home from work. And you're right, it's, it's, that's when people are going to be operating these machines. And it'll certainly increase all our call volume and, and we'll deal with that if we have to. But that's, that's certainly a concern as well.
Also worth noting for the record that we would be fully staffed if the council hadn't authorized adding an additional officer to the workforce.
That's true. I appreciate you guys doing that. That's absolutely right. We, we've been at 35 for many, many, many years. And we were blessed with the 36 last year. So we're trying to get there.
Further questions regarding chief's report and presentation for the evening?
Thank you, Chief.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Can I make a motion that we table this for maybe 30 days till we can regroup and discuss what the chief talked about instead of saying dying a horrible death?
You can, you can make that motion. There's a second to table. Is there perhaps direction with that table then? Is it to, to have an ordinance come back that demonstrates those neighborhoods and zones where it would be permitted?
I'm sorry?
Does, do you want, do you want amendment work done on the ordinance in the meantime? That's what I'm looking for.
I think we ought to, the ordinance committee regroup here and, you know, kind of go by the chief's wishes and see what, see what we can put together.
Okay, so we have a motion to refer it back to the subcommittee to amend the ordinance reflecting chief's wishes to do more of a trial based on neighborhoods or housing developments.
And just-
And that's your second.
And discuss anything else? Does any council members have any other problems with this ordinance?
I just have a question. It's not a problem. The hours of operation, is it 30 minutes before sunrise or 30 minutes after sunrise? It's written before. Is that how they do it? Instead of then 30 minutes after sunset? Okay. It's not quite dark, but-
Depends on the ordinance. Some of them are sunrise to sunset. I looked at a bunch of them this weekend, so.
Okay. I just didn't know if it's too dark for those two hot times or what.
So we have a motion and second to refer back to the subcommittee looking at an amendment to propose operations in defined neighborhoods and housing developments as well as consideration of hours of operation. Further discussion and consideration on the motion to refer back to the subcommittee. Not hearing any further discussion or question, we will call the question in favor of the motion to refer back to the subcommittee. Kristi?
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pike.
Yes.
Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodickam.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Okay. And with that, the matter is referred back to the subcommittee. They will reconvene in public meetings to take up that issue. And of course, duly required public notices will be published along with that schedule. So, thank you. Next item on the agenda under Ms. La- Next item on the agenda under miscellaneous, I do have a letter that I will read into the record for council regarding a uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement by myself as the mayor of the city. And I do have the appropriate paperwork here for filing with council. Once I've finished the letter, I'm glad to answer any questions council members may have, but at that time would request a motion from council to receive and file the uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement. June 11th, 2024, dear council members, I am writing to inform you of a recent development that necessitates my action by ethical standards and legal obligations. My wife, Jenna Strick, has been hired as the director of the Humane Society by their board of directors. In addition to filing the required disclosure pursuant to Indiana Code 35-44.1-1-4, I have recused myself from negotiation regarding the annual city services contract for animal control services with the Huntington County Humane Society. In my place, Charles Chapman as council president and Annette Carroll, director of operations for the city, will oversee the negotiation. I strongly believe in the importance of maintaining high ethical standards and promoting transparency in our interactions. I greatly appreciate your understanding in this regard. If you have any questions or need further clarification, please feel free to contact me. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding. Any immediate questions regarding the matter or the request? Would a council member make a motion and second for receipt of the statement by the clerk?
I'll move.
Second. Motion and second for the discussion and consideration?
Just congratulations to Jenna.
Yeah, congratulations. And I'm sure she'll do amazing.
She's very excited, so... Call a question, Christie?
Bunk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Brodigum?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Thank you, Christie, this is for you. I will present a similar statement in the form as well for the board of works, so... Next item under miscellaneous, we do have an update from Director Keplinger regarding naturalized landscapes. Council will be reminded as recorded in the minutes that were approved earlier that a member of the community appeared to request modification on the current requirement for 400-foot notice for this particular item to look at reducing possibly to 100-foot notice, public notice on this. So Bryn is here to provide an update to council and further discussion on it. Is there a motion to open the matter in discussion? Motion and second, Director Keplinger.
Thank you, mayor. I understand that some discussion was held last meeting in my absence concerning the naturalized landscape provisions under Section 98 of the city's code. In interest of full disclosure, Section 98 is the nuisance section. That is operated and administered by and large by the ordinance officers in the police department sometime in 1991, for whatever reasons may it be, under the Schinkel administration. Dave, you're the only one still here that was around then, so any context you can provide to fill in the gaps, I would appreciate because I was...
I remember it quite well.
Okay, good. So I'm not really sure how it came about or to be, at the end of the day, it is what it is, right? It is essentially a way in which someone can maintain or not maintain, depending on how you want to argue it, lawn and landscaping area that is not going to be at risk of running afoul of the city's tall grass and weed ordinance and receive a citation from the ordinance officer. And so how it works, if you haven't seen the code, is that the person makes an application with our office, our office then takes it to the plan commission for a public hearing. As part of that public hearing process, two things happen. The applicant at their expense pays for a legal notice to run in the newspaper. You're looking at probably about 40 bucks for that. And the applicant at their expense notifies all property owners within 400 feet. And that is at their expense. So, for example, I took Dave's house and I drew a 400-foot parcel buffer around there and there are 60 parcels within 400 feet that would require notice if Dave decided that he wanted to let his grass grow taller, whatever the case may be. At the current postage rate, you're looking at about another $40.80 of notice. So at the end of the day, I think that was kind of the concern was that the, that Dawn presented was the onerous task of notifying an excessive amount of properties. In the city of Huntington, the average parcel depth's about 132 feet, give or take, depending on whether you're in a corner lot or there's some smaller non-conformings. You know, you could have a number of notice parcels within that notice area. I did go and take that and extrapolate that out a little bit, again, using Dave's house as an example. If you went 300 feet, 36 parcels, 25 bucks. If you went 200 feet, 27 parcels, 18 bucks. If you went 100 feet, 12 parcels, $8. So as council, I think it's your obligation to balance the needs of those neighbors receiving notice. So in addition to those things we outlined, we'd also ask them to stick a yellow notice sign in their yard so that, you know, somebody driving by would do that. That's very similar. One thing I do want to correct that Dawn did say at the last meeting, when we went through, when we split off from the county in 2014 and came in and stood up a department here at the city and evaluated our notice requirements, we did bump some of them down. We are currently at 100 feet for plan commission and BZA notices. We found that to be relatively adequate, given what we're potentially dealing with. The most immediate concern with those plan commission and BZA hearings is obviously the adjacent neighbors and then obviously it kind of tampers down as you get further out. And so we did not miss that. It is not a land use thing that we looked at doing, so just to clarify that, nobody's asleep at the wheel down there. So anyways, 400 feet is what it is. I will tell you, I did go back through our records. In 1993, at the corner of Millside Run and Meadow Pass is the only naturalized landscape that's been approved in the city of Huntington there at Wurtenbergers. I've got a picture of it, if anybody really cares to see what it looks like today. Sorry, I have too many open here. That's what it looks like today. And so if you guys aren't familiar, as part of that naturalized landscape process, you know, they're supposed to submit a plan and an application and all this. This was the plan that was submitted in 98, talks about all the different plantings, what they're going to have, there were the letters of support from the neighbors, all that. Getting way into the weeds. What the question I think before you guys is, is 400 feet too much? Is 400 feet just right? I don't know. That's a question for you. I would say that given what we're talking about, a reduction to maybe down to 200 feet may be worth evaluating. We just haven't had enough to know really what the concerns are, and I don't have firsthand experience of that, of the neighbors and what those thoughts are. Obviously, it's not a highly popular thing. I don't know if reducing it down to that would be more popular. Perhaps many of the citizens are unaware that there is a, for lack of a better terms, loophole in the ordinance and maybe we'll see an uptick once word gets out. I don't know, but we're here for it. But ultimately, I think the request before you is what 400 feet looks like. And I talked about that, I did that around Dave's house here, just to give you an idea. That's quite a wide berth. You know, you're going beyond the same street and over to the nearest street, but then again, you know, you're probably hitting most of the people that would drive by. Well, Dave lives on a busy street, but a lot of people that would drive by it in a normal basis, so... At the end of the day, what we're talking about is, you know, essentially an $80 out-of-pocket cost for a petitioner. I will say that re-zonings are flat fee because it also includes staff time and that's not a cost that's recouped here. It's 250 and variances through the BZA are 150. And so if you look at that, about half price on the low end. But ultimately, the productive is yours. I don't know that I've got a dog in it.
Thanks, Bryn. So that radius is 400 feet on the image depicted, correct?
Yes.
So if you were to guesstimate, since we don't have it marked there, can you show us or give us an idea of what 100-foot radius might look like?
Well, I'm going to guess Dave's lot's probably about 130-some feet long, so you're probably going one property depth this side, two this side, two to three this side, you'd hit these, so...
So the immediate neighbors?
Yeah, you're basically at 12 properties, so you're going to hit one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
When we did that for Jim back in 91...
Now he's got the explanation.
That was Worthman's addition up there.
Yep.
And there weren't any houses up there. I mean, it was just, he owned about half of that area up there and he wanted to put this where you grew anything you want to grow, you know, and people just kind of glued, but that's the way that thing, that whole thing came about. I remember it quite well.
Well, I built up in that addition.
Yeah, to Dave's point, if you look here where you see where they did vacant lot, vacant lot, and then some other houses, but a number of them were vacant, yeah, go ahead.
But I built my house with an eyeshot of that. I thought it was really neat. We've got a little wooded area there in the neighborhood. Kids would go in there and play and it was, we knew it wasn't going to be developed. We rather enjoyed that amenity.
Just not everyone is guaranteed to look like that, though.
That's what I was going to bring up. I'm concerned, I'm concerned somebody's going to want to stop mowing their lawn and put in wildflowers and things like that. That would all have to be approved.
So the, so yeah, just so everybody's clear, land management plan, the application, a statement of intent and purpose for the property, a site plan of the property showing all buildings, paved areas and location of all existing and proposed landscaping, a general description of the vegetation types proposed, a statement of the management and maintenance techniques to be used. Proposed land management plans will be reviewed and evaluated based upon the following criteria by the plan commission. Compatibility with adjacent properties and street and alley rideways, obviously, you know, don't want stuff growing up and blocking intersection visibility, things like that. Preservation of existing plant communities, re-establishment of native plant communities, limitation of the area of lawn grass, landscaping and site development which retains stormwater runoff, utilization of plant materials which are well-suited to the characteristics of the property and the elimination of weeds and rake vegetation.
Bryn, could you reread the portion pertaining to lawn grass?
Limitation of the area of lawn grass.
So it's not just that somebody can start letting their lawn grass grow, they're going to be reducing it through the native plantings or other...
In theory, yes. But that's the intent of the ordinance, absolutely.
That's how the planning commission's going to approve or not approve the application, right? It's based on that statute?
Mm-hmm.
And they would present a site plan on the type of vegetation, like Jim did, type of vegetation and where it's going to be?
Yeah. So you've got a complete list? And I did read in the minutes back when he did it, he had the nursery come up with this.
No, it's a nice, nice space.
There's a little 100-acre wood there.
Yeah. So all that aside, the question to you is, what is adequate notice to the neighbors? I will say that given print media what it is, we rely less on that for word to get out. Social media obviously is up there, but that's not factored into that. The yellow notice sign does quite a bit of work, but we just sent out plan commission mailings the end of last week. Yeah, we got a couple of calls already just from those direct mailing. So by and large, that's our most effective tool for notice. I will say, I think the USPS is proposing to go to like 76 cents or something for a stamp here in July, so that'll obviously kick it up five more bucks.
Council members, any other questions for Bryn pertaining to the matter brought to us by Ms. Harvey? If not, then we would appreciate direction from council. So you had a resident bring this to your attention. The administration can bring back an amendment or take a look at that and bring back recommendations to council, but we do want to make sure that it's something that council's inclined to hear and discuss, so would entertain a motion giving us direction?
I think 100 feet's not that far, especially if I were to take the empty lot next to my house and plant a dozen trees that's going to affect anyone else, I'd like it to, I'd like more neighbors to have their input on it. Kind of like Bryn's idea of going 200 feet.
I can support that.
That way more people have a say in it and more people are notified. So make a motion for 200 feet? Sorry.
You want to second it? I can second. Okay, I'll second.
Don't fight.
Motion and second, giving direction to bring back an ordinance reducing the requirement from 400 feet to 200 feet. Further discussion, consideration by council members? Call the question in favor of the motion?
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Brodigum?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Bunk?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, I'm going to invite Chief Boxwell back forward to lead discussion regarding public record requests for police body camera recordings. Is there a motion to open that discussion?
I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and second. And then prior to chief's comments, I want to make clear for the benefit of the public that the city, of course, fulfills and honors all our requests for information. We are running into situations where we have folks that are requesting extensive amounts of information not pertaining to their otherwise rights and responsibilities as residents.
That's very true.
Chief, you can share a little bit more about some of that.
Absolutely. We're taking bets in the back, who talks longer? I'm hoping it's Bryn. So as many of you guys know, about a year ago, we instituted a body cam policy and all of our officers are now, while on duty and in a uniform, required to wear body cams. They have been a huge blessing to our department. Really happy and I think if you ask any officer on our department, they would absolutely agree. What the mayor's referring to and what this ordinance speaks to, if you've had the opportunity to read it, is simply by state statute, we can charge those requesters up to $150 for us to give them that body cam video. And the reason that we're asking for this to take place is because of the number of requests that we've started to receive. Once that word has gotten out there that we have body cams, I can tell you, we received one request from a YouTube channel. And what that individual was doing is he, they're just surfing, charging informations across the nation and they found that we had charged somebody with a battery on an officer by bodily fluid. And they just wanted our video so that they could post it to their YouTube channel and make money on it. More so, more commonly, and Mike knows this, he's smirking back there, but all of our requests get vetted through Mike, of course, and more so here recently, we're getting requests from civil attorneys wanting our information for crash investigations. I think we had three just last week alone. And not that that's a bad thing, but like as an example, Chief McCutcheon had our office manager put this information together for me today, and that is, we worked up PI accident, which is a personal injury accident out at Business 24 and Broadway here about two months ago, and we had three officers that responded to that on second shift, right? And so they requested all of our in-car video, so now we've got three cars on scene that are all running dash cams. They requested three body cam videos, so now we've got three officers that we have to, you know, sit there and redact. So the information that we have to redact, if there's any juveniles in that car, was full of young kids that all got transported to the hospital up in Fort Wayne. And so we've got to watch that video and blur out the faces of each and every child in there. Any computer screen, any cell phone, we have to take the time to blot that out as well. The in-car, our dash cams, we have an in-car microphone that picks up our radio traffic, so we have to watch all of that to blurt out any personal information that happens to be broadcast on the radio. So out of those videos that I just mentioned to you, it took our office manager, Kayla, because she's, her, myself and Chief McCutcheon are the three that have the powers to go in and redact those videos, to produce those. Of those six videos I just mentioned, it took her a full eight-hour day just to put that video together for just one request. So as the mayor and I have talked, it just doesn't seem right to put that burden on our taxpayers to have to pay for that when these insurance companies are the ones that are requesting that information. So a little bit more specific to the ordinance that we're proposing, we found one with the assistance of Mr. Hartburg, we found an ordinance that IMPD uses, Indianapolis Metro Police Department. It's a graduated fee scale. So it doesn't just, you know, if you want a five-minute video because you interacted with one of our officers, Dave, we're not going to ding you for $150 because of that. So our, this particular ordinance speaks to a graduated fee scale that would go from, if it's less than five minutes, if our cumulative video is less than five minutes, it's free. I shouldn't say free, we get to charge them $4. Christie charges folks $4 and that's the cost of the flash drive that we put the video on because that's what we pay for flash drives is $4.[1789.11] the video on because that's what we pay for flash drives is four dollars. I think it's five minutes to thirty minutes is a fifty-dollar fee. Thirty minutes to an hour is a hundred dollars. And then anything over an hour is, did I get that right, Mike? One fifty, yeah. So, it's a cumulative total of all the videos that we put together. And I think it works better in our community personally to utilize that graduated fee scale. So, that's what we're looking to put before you guys and looking for your approval. There was a bill at the State House last session that would actually grant police departments across the state to actually bill for time. Like, we could figure out our office manager's hourly rate and charge whatever it takes to put that video together. But I think they were after some more specifics and more clarification. That did not pass. But right now, the state statute is one hundred and fifty dollars is a maximum fee.
So, tonight's conversation is just for the benefit of council. We will be bringing an ordinance back for consideration at a future meeting, but we didn't want that sprung on you. And so, tonight's preview, you're welcome, obviously, if you have any follow-up questions with Chief here in the public meeting or to reach out independently. But we will have an ordinance before you at a future meeting.
My apologies. I didn't realize you didn't actually have a copy of it. That's all good. That's it in a nutshell.
Yep.
Okay.
Any further questions this evening for Chief regarding this matter?
Yeah, the altercation on Broadway with the kids involved and everything, how long of a video was that?
So, each video was just around nineteen minutes long, I think. And again, it took her, you know, anywhere from a half an hour to an hour for each video to piece that together because you got to actually watch the videos twice is the problem.
So, would they be paying for all six videos at nineteen minutes?
No. So, let's say in that sense, it's certainly over an hour's worth of cumulative video because we have six of them at about nineteen minutes apiece. If I can do math, that's about an hour and a half worth of video roughly. So, it'd just be that hundred and fifty dollar fee because that total would be over the hour, hours worth of video, if that makes sense. So, one fifty's the max you can charge now? Correct, correct. You know, and again, if it's a citizen locally and they have an interaction with one of our officers and they just want that interaction, we can deal with that. And we certainly won't charge them a hundred and fifty dollars because that'll be a much shorter video, I'm sure. Makes sense?
If it comes up down in Indy again to reconsider billing for the time and you need somebody to come and testify with you, I'll be happy to join you.
Mayor and I have had that exact conversation, you know. It is very time-consuming. And again, you gotta, we have to blot out so many faces. And then, like I mentioned to PJ, we have to actually watch it twice because once you do it, then you got to go back and do it again. And if somebody crosses, we have the capability with the technology in our system that we can put a little blur over someone's face and it will track them through the video. But the second somebody crosses in front of them, you lose it and you got to start all over. So, it is good technology. It just takes a little time. Thank you again.
Thank you, Chief.
I think Ty goes to the runner, so you're the winner tonight between you and Bryn.
Okay, last item on the agenda at this point is updates on the budget schedule as well as financials for the monthly report. Christie?
Yes, I did put a budget schedule in your packet this time. I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of the dates. And if you were, if anyone was going to be not able to make one of the October meetings for the adoption of budgets, I will not be there at the first meeting. We can still certainly adopt at that meeting because I would have someone replacing me or we can wait until the second meeting to adopt. But that was the only question I had on the schedule. Everything else, I think, is pretty standard on the ones that we do. The only to be announced or to be determined was my meeting with DLGF on going through the budgets and it'll be sometime the third or fourth week of July. So, that's all I have on that. If you have any concerns or just let me know. And then the end of May monthly budget report, we ended the general fund with five million six hundred thousand dollars and Park had a hundred and four and landfill sixty-five thousand and MBH was one point seven and then MBH restricted is five hundred and thirty thousand. I know we have some like paving projects and stuff that's going to take the budget. We just haven't spent some of that money, but that's, the funds are in good shape for almost, for five months in. I was going to say half a year, but we should be getting settlement here next, by the end of this week or next week from the state for, from the auditor's office at the county. And so, I'm looking forward to that, making our balances even healthier.
Thank you, Christie. And to further elaborate, as Christie noted, when council was looking at the budget last year, the budget that was appropriated did not include capital expenditures like these road projects. And so, Tim and Adam and other department heads are preparing those additional appropriations. We'll bring them to council and that will come out of those cash reserves. And it will, it will take a bite out of them. So, okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Not, if there's a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.